With that, I'll take a motion to accept the-
Motion.
... meaning minutes? Motion by Pat to accept the-
Second.
... meaning minutes, seconded by, I got John.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Before we get into the public hearings at 7:05 and 7:10, in our packet, we have a notice of public comment hearing for Gas Line or Enstar Gas doing business as EverSource. This one's for Hopkinton, is that correct Larry?
Yeah, Hopkinton, Ashland.
Hopkinton, Ashland.
Right.
I read that. It really doesn't affect us, but we just got it the other day, so.
Yeah, this is just notification because we're in a budding town that Enstar Gas is looking to put a 12-inch, six-inch, no, to replace the six-inch line with a 12-inch line in Wilson, between the Wilson Street Gas Gate Station in Hopkinton and Pond Street Gate Station in Ashland. I guess that ought to be fun considering the goings-on of last weekend in Andover and not Andover and Lawrence, but-
Right.
Well, at least it's this company.
Yep, that's true, it is, it's not Columbia Gas, so.
Timing is everything.
So that's just for our notification.
Yep.
There are no 81Ps tonight. We've got a couple of minutes before 7:05, so we can hold off on that one, I guess, till then Larry, or?
Yeah, you want to do one of the site plans? One Industrial Road's pretty straightforward.
Alright, we can do that one. Site plan review for One Industrial Road, Sierra Naturals, Inc.
Simple and straightforward.
While they're doing that, I'll read Larry's letter. Applicant requests site plan approval to construct a 15,228 square foot greenhouse structure on the subject property for the purpose of indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana. Proposed use is permitted in this zone only for an entity that was licensed or registered by the state and approved to operate in Milford prior to July 1, 2017 as a medical marijuana treatment center. Sierra Naturals meets this requirement with their operation at 13 Commercial Way. Fifteen off-street parking spaces are required and are being provided adjacent to the building at the northeasterly portion of the site. All applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met, therefore I approve subject to the relevant agency comments. I'll read the other comments back in after the applicant makes the presentation.
Good evening, George Micho, Gary Aaron Hellman, and I'm here on behalf of Sierra Naturals, and this is the team from Sierra Naturals, Michael Dudas and Jeremy Henderson and Mr. Antonellis, and the site plan is, as you mentioned, 15,200 square feet greenhouse facility. It has a greenhouse portion with a transparent roof and is unattached to it, building for other, for bedrooms and other facilities associated with the business. It has 15 parking spots, parking lot with 15 parking spots. It will be landscaped towards between the street and the facility. Two detention ponds will mitigate rain runoff. And the facility will be serviced by town utilities. That's pretty much most of it. Do you have any questions?
The, I guess, the drainage, just to go over where that's running and where it discharges into, and then, just, because I can't tell where on Commercial Way that is, do you have, in terms of the budding properties or wherever, I mean, Pat, you probably know where it is, but I'm not-
It's the very first lot as you come on to Industrial Road right there on the right.
So we have Birch Street-
Closest to Bertrand, I guess it's easier.
Well, the two light lots that they cut down and blasted.
There's an aerial attached to the packet, Joe.
Okay.
There used to be a copier store or something like that across the street, I don't know what it is anywhere, but-
Yeah, I know.
That was the very first building on the left, this is the very first lot on the right.
Okay.
I don't think it's a copier store, it's something else now. Changes all the time.
To address your question in terms of drainage, water from the parking area will be collected in this water quality well and will go to a detention pond from which it will be discharged in a controlled manner into the wetlands. And the runoff, the clean runoff from the roof will be, will reach this well that goes around the building, will go to a detention pond, and then it will be discharged again in a controlled manner into the wetlands.
And the only other thing I had, I guess everything that's grown here will be shipped out, so there is, there is other than the people working here, those are the only people that would be at the facility.
This is the greenhouse.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm good.
Hearing none.
I make a motion, we approve the site plan?
Motion by Babe to approve the site plan, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four in favor, one is abstention?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, that did it.
7:07, so we can now go to the public hearings. 7:05 public hearing was an application of Volta Oil Company to amend section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule of zoning bylaw to provide for self-service gas stations by zoning board of appeals special permit within the CBCC, IA, IB, and IC zone districts.
Good evening.
Director Allen?
On the pleasure of the board, Joseph Antonellis on behalf of the applicant. Volta Oil, with me is Peter Garrett, who is a principal of Volta Oil. Volta is located in Plymouth, Massachusetts, is a family-run company, family-owned and operated. They operate multiple stations throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Their closest station to Milford is the Rapid Refill Station on Route 140 in Franklin, excuse me, Bellingham, very close to the Franklin Line. You have approved the site plan for our present location, which is on Cedar Street. The building is being constructed now, progress is going very well, and throughout the course of my representation for Peter, we've discussed the possibility of attempting to allow for self-service gas in the town of Milford again. I submitted a zoning article, proposed article to the selectmen, and prior to meeting with you tonight, I've also had another meeting with the Commission on Disability to discuss some of the issues that they may have regarding the access, the ability for handicapped people to be properly waited on in these facilities. We've also met with fire chief, who I believe has provided a preliminary recommendation. I think that primarily his recommendation is based on the fact that the code of regulations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have significant provisions relative to the safety of individuals in self-service stations, the monitoring that is required by way of television cameras, as well as sensors and other things as such, that I believe the chief, I'm not here to speak for him, but we had pleasant conversations, I believe that he's comfortable with the bylaw as it has been presented. We have suggested in the bylaw that the operation of a self-service station take place under the same provisions in the town of Milford that one would permit a gas station, which is a special permit from the Board of Appeals. We have, again, I had a very pleasant conversation with the commission, I'm not sure if they forwarded a letter to you yet, I was informed that they would most likely send a letter with some suggestions. One of the things that I represented to the board, the commission, was that to the extent that my client is an operator in the town with self-service stations, that the price of gasoline will be the same whether it's pumped by the individual consumer or pumped by an employee of the company for someone who does not feel as though they can pump the gas themselves. That is the procedure and of this particular individual as he runs his gas stations, and any provision in a special permit to that effect would be welcomed by my client, and that's how he does business. I think you note that the pumps today, as they are designed, they have call buttons on them, and there are phone numbers placed on them, so someone coming who's handicapped, who could not reach out the window, would have the ability to make a telephone call, and as Peter can tell you, if they don't call, they can beep, and that seems to work. Now, the size of the station will control the number of employees. Pete, jump in if I make a mistake, but I believe it's any station that has 1,500 square feet of retail area must at all times have two attendants on. One of those attendants is there specifically for the purpose of monitoring the television monitors and making certain that people are properly served and that the safety protocols are in place, and the second person would be there to basically sell the sundries, the goods and sundries that are there. Peter's facility will be over 1,500, so it will be staffed as such. That is not the case on smaller stores. But again, with the ability of a special permit, as this board knows, that will allow the approving board to place restrictions, so to the extent that one were to believe that there needs to be multiple employees at a small store, then certainly that could be put into the provisions of a special permit. So that's the overview of what we'd like to do. We're fairly certain, and I talked to the fire chief about this, not every station in Milford that is presently in existence will be able to adapt. It's a significant cost, so I believe you're going to have a town that has always had full service stations. If this bylaw were to pass, you'll have a town that will have both types of service stations. So Peter has significantly more experience with the industry than do I, and has done the research for both of us relative to issues about the American Disabilities Act, and frankly, there aren't any regulations. The ADA is very quiet on it, there's just a suggestion about call buttons, and that's basically it. Any and all of the regulations that would be tied in basically come in through the fire marshal's office, so. Unless I've missed something, Peter, I think that's fairly, fairly comprehensive as to what we do. Now, there would be no intention, under these circumstances, to have dedicated aisles. Peter will tell you that doesn't work anymore, again, and that's why the pumps all have phone numbers on them and have signage relative to anyone that needs assistance. And to the extent, again, under the special permit process, that the zoning board or any board felt as though additional signage was necessary, they have the opportunity to impose that. So with that, I'll stop and allow for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Antonellis. This is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up to the members of the board, and then anybody in the audience that would like to speak or make a comment will be able to do that afterwards, so with that, I'll open it up to-
Yeah, your packet has the form of the amendment, and it should be Article 11 in the special town meeting warrant.
Okay, thank you Larry. Questions from the board? Babe?
Yeah, first of all, I hate this rush stuff. Every time, it's two weeks before or three weeks before the town meeting. I mean, you've been, your owner, and again, not you, Antonellis, it's your client, but they've been working on this station for five years. Now, three weeks before the special town meeting, we gotta rush an article, and I think this article has to be written in such a way to protect the elderly. We are getting an older population, and I understand that this station does pump it for everyone, and that's commendable, but there's two possibilities, there are two problems there. One, that the other stations in town are not going to do this. Mobile Oil is not going to give you a nickel, they're going to take every cent that they can get from you. Shell Oil, Gulf Oil, they're all that way. Also, this company does a great job doing this, but there's also a possibility of selling out, or something, and now you've got, you're back to zero. This town has worked very well with the self-service, and again, with the population getting older and older, it's, it's a real, I've got a real issue with that, and again, trying to write this article to get it in for the town meeting, I've got a problem. I've got a problem with that, especially where, again, where we had the time, the time restraints for years now, knowing we're coming to the town to do business, and the town bylaws have been that way forever, so that's right now, that's all I got to say immediately, but.
May I respond? First of all, we have not been here for five years, you are correct, there wasn't a previous application that was approved, but that application was terminated by a period of time. The issue with leasing that property was problematic, the deal was resurrected, so we've really only been back for a year and a half, and secondly, just for the record, the requested article was submitted on July 9. And so I don't control the fact that we're three weeks away from the town meeting, I recognize that it's a short period of time, but I did submit it on July 9.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I have received a number of phone calls from people that are handicapped, and so they have, they're very concerned about the fact that when they do drive up there, is there really going to be someone there to help them? And if it's a busy day and there's one person there, then they have to sit and wait. So I think that's a concern with the handicap. And the red button, I mean, is there going to be a red button that's going to indicate handicap accessible, to press that and someone will come out? Is that how that's going to work?
Yeah, so, I can respond to that. So as far as the ADA is concerned, they do address gas stations two different ways. One is that gas pumps are not exempt from any of the ADA requirements. So the ADA requirements is someone in a wheelchair, everything needs to be below 48 inches. Okay, 42. The, all of the dispensers that would be at our facility, and frankly, there's a requirement at all gas stations, there are some gas stations that have dispensers that predate this, but if you make any modifications of those dispensers, you need to go ahead and upgrade that. So, there's, the nice thing about the way the ADA handles this is, they basically say, for those handicapped people that want to pump their own gas, and there are a lot that want to, you need to make that accessible. So from that perspective, our gas station, and frankly, all of the gas stations in the state of Massachusetts and throughout the country have to comply with those regulations. So these, so that will happen. The next question is really what you're referring to, which is, someone's handicapped, or maybe they're elderly, or maybe they just can't pump their own gas, for whatever reason.
Well, they have to get out, they have to put their credit card in, there's a number of things that they would have to do.
There's two options. One is, there's a help button on all dispensers, so if they cannot get out of their car, like Mr. Alan Antonellis suggested, what they have the ability to do, and what we've done in the past, is we'll use a sign like that, that's on the dispenser, that actually gives the phone number to the store, and/or ask them to honk, and we go ahead and we send our service, our cashier out there to pump the gas. They're all trained to pump the gas, that's just, that's what our standard operating procedure is. What we find honestly is those individuals that are having trouble pumping, either whether they're elderly or handicapped, they come to the same place. They go to the location that's going to service them, and it's no different than anybody else. If someone doesn't service them, well then they're going to go to the gas station down the street. You know, one thing that Milford does have, they've got a lot of gas stations, and so as a result, there is that choice. Joe suggested other alternatives, the old, the old strip across the pavement where the bell goes off and rings. At the end of the day, it comes down to whether or not that person is going to service, is going to service the facility. I've been in the city of Milford, and I've watched full-serve locations, and I've watched people pump their own gas. I mean, it happens, right? So, because they're not getting there fast enough, you know, the one or two attendants that are servicing the entire station, they don't get there. So, you know, we feel that this has worked, it's worked in the other, I think Oregon is, Oregon and New Jersey, the only two, Oregon just changed, so now there's one state left. And there's probably, I think there's six towns in the state of Massachusetts that are still mandated full-serve, for whatever reason, some of it's safety, some of it's not. Frankly, the fire suppression that you're required to put in for a self-serve location, the safety's much more comprehensive than it would be at a full-serve, so. I don't know if I answered your question, I went a little bit on a tangent.
That's interesting, I mean, I'm just, I was just concerned with the handicap, trying to get their credit card in and out of the area where they put them, and, you know, because I've had a couple of phone calls from the handicap, this is why I brought it up. My next question would be, how does this impact the gas stations that are not going to pump your own gas? I mean, is-
They're going to stay full-service.
They're going to stay full-service.
No.
Because, you know, I wouldn't want them to start losing money because everybody's going the other way. That's, I've been looking at it, and it's probably a financial situation.
I would say, I would say that it will affect them, the effect frankly will probably be the price of gasoline will go down.
Right.
And so, that is something that typically happens, your economics change, you, it's very difficult to hire people to pump gas, we have a few full-serve gas stations across our chain, and it's very difficult to do that, so that is something that is of concern. But the other thing is, there are people that want full-serve gas stations, and there are operators that will choose not to go ahead and invest in the technology of credit card readers, they won't invest in fire suppression, and so as a result, they may decide to stay full-serve. It may also tie in with the type of operation they are. Typically, full-serve gas stations operate with service-bay facilities.
Right.
And I would think that those locations will keep their customer base that has used to full-serve and that desires full-serve, so. I think it's just giving the people of Milford a choice, one way or the other. I agree with Joe, I don't think every single store or every single service-bay facility that has gas pumps will change to self-serve immediately. I do know that there are probably another five or six other locations that have expressed interest, that they would like to have the option to consider self-serve, but I want to say there's 15 gas stations? I think it's 14 or 15 gas stations in Milford, so. And then you have surrounding towns that obviously-
Thank you.
Has any consideration been given to having a combination station? I go to Mendon to get my gas, and there's two pumps dedicated to somebody pouring for you.
Yep.
And the other pumps are all self-serve, and that seems to work quite well.
Yeah, so, for our gas station, we would not make that choice, and what Joe had suggested was that, you know, what we typically do is we make every island self-serve, but if somebody wants it to be pumped for them, we will go ahead and oblige them, and we won't charge them an upcharge or anything like that.
At least they keep it separate, they keep those pumps-
Yeah, it's dedicated island, yeah, so.
Two guys run out in white shirts and ties, it looks good, too.
There you go. So, as a result, you know, a dedicated island would require us to put somebody on duty that is dedicated to that island.
Right, and that's okay.
What ends up happening, what we found, I don't know about Mendon, but what they end up having is they have two prices. So they'll have a full-serve price, and they'll have a self-serve price, and when they do that, typically that price ranges, that I've seen, somewhere between 30 to 50 cents a gallon.
Whoa.
No, that's been-
I don't know what-
What'd you get in Mendon?
Mendon's the same price.
Same price.
No, it's 10.
Typically, it's not.
It's 10 cents.
And the reason being is, the reason being of those operations are that-
To pay someone.
Self-serve represents about 80%, 90% of the business, and only full-serve is 10 or 20% of the business. Whether it's a dime, whether it's 20, 30, 40 cents, that's just the breakdown of what we see in those split-island operations. But it's, but this, I guess my point would be, this bylaw that is proposed would not prohibit someone from offering that. So if, so if the mobile station, or the Gulf Station, or any of the other gas stations in Milford decided that their situation, their layout was conducive to a split island, they would, they would be, they would have to get a self-serve permit for the self-serve island, and then they would go ahead and operate full-serve on the full-serve island.
I get that.
Yeah, I think if we put that into the bylaw for it were to pass, I think the issue would be, you'd pretty much preclude any small operator from doing it because they don't have the ability to-
Single island, difficulty to do.
I don't know that you want to put that into the bylaw or not.
They won't do it anymore.
Anything else, John?
Nope, that's it.
You know, I find that you have two types of people who get gas. Those, as I remember back with my mother, who got, went to the same gas station because it was on her route of how she did things, she drove a triangle, so she only went to one gas station. There's many similar to myself that it's out of convenience, I need gas, I stop, wherever it is, that's where I am. One of the things that I've often noticed, I don't really see a huge price differential between full-service and self-service, I just don't. It's marginal at best. One of the big annoying factors that I seemingly see repetitively with self-serve, and I'd love to know how you cure this, because I don't think you can, is those individuals who go, pull up, run into your store, either they get gas before or they get gas after, and they're in your way. Now, we start looking at some of these sensitive areas-
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
-close to a highway, and it becomes gridlocked. Now, when I look at your location, close to a highway, specific an entrance and an exit, and perhaps the mobile one-
Right.
-by stop and chop, it concerns me, because at present configuration, when someone's pumping it, if you go out of your car and go to the store, it's no harm, no foul.
That's right.
But you can't leave the pump, in theory, and go and pump and not be with your car. But like I said, you pull in, and you're looking around, so when you say someone's beeping their horn, that's me beeping my horn to get the guy out of there, but I've never seen any attendant come out to try to help me.
No, they're not there.
I'm just saying, I've never seen that.
They don't get paid to do that.
I'm just saying. So, I've never conceptually understood the entire benefit to the town of Milford and/or its residents, when I look at the marginal difference in cost, but I look at the long-term inconvenience of those, like I said. I've yet to see a service station, self-service station, that can cure that. And for the most part, I've never seen many employees making an attempt to tell people, "No, no, no, get back in your car, move your car," and by the way, you all have parking spots in front for your convenience store, and it's really not that hard, if you think about it, get back in your car and pull up and get out of the way, but no one does. So like I said, I find them to be gridlocked.
And all those parking spaces are taken up from people in the convenience store.
No, a lot of times they're not, they're in the gas, they're at the gas pop in the store. Like I said, these are some of the problems that I've always seen with self-serve, that to me, they become sometimes more of a nuisance. When we look at also the signposts telling me, or telling the person who pumped gas that they're responsible for all the spills, well, I mean, hey, that's the peril of what, you know, you get what you get. You want it self-serve, you have to assume that there's going to be a certain degree of those individuals who are perhaps untrained, unwilling, or just not paying attention, and they have spillage. You know, that's the cost of doing business. I don't necessarily think it should be borne to the consumer per se, specific if they're there and they just, you know, something happened. You know, again, I look at my mother-in-law, I don't know if she can find the tank, never mind, you know, realize to take it back out when it was done, I'm sorry, but it just, I know how she is. So I mean, these are things that-
She's watching.
What's that?
She's watching.
She can watch, but she'll know. She knows, I mean, you know, and that's- I mean, you know, and that's, you know, this is the reality. We have to look at things in real purpose. So like I said, I, I've never really seen the benefit of self-serve, specific to Milford. And I'm actually happy that we don't have it. No, no one's ever convinced me that we need it. There's no real issue in front of me and I don't think you guys can give me a real purposeful reason why self-serve is, is necessary in Milford. I just, you know, I know you have your reasons because it makes good business and that's the business you're in. And to Babe's point, you know, you're a little different because you're a family business, but you're a family business today. And this bylaw doesn't, isn't specific to you. It's specific to the petroleum business as it, as it's seated here in Milford as we speak. And Babe's right, some of the other larger conglomerates, if you will, are not going to take the consideration of the residents of Milford at all. They're just not, like I said. So, I question the whole ability of those individuals who can't get out of their car tooting their horn because I've never seen anyone come out for me. So, unless you can give it to me, otherwise.
I, I can only give you an example that's a bit contrary to that. And so I, I said this at the commission again for disabilities. Would any of you envisioned that you would drive, go to a drugstore and pull up to a window and get your prescription? Would any of you envisioned a few years ago that almost every time you stop to get a coffee, you would go through a drive-through window? And Milford has been very accommodating to that trend in society. And I think that basically what you have is another trend in business, okay? The question is whether or not you want to adopt and accept that trend. You've adopted all the others. You have pharmacies that are open all night with drive-through windows. You have coffee stores that are open all night with drive-through windows, okay? You have fast food places with drive-through windows. And this planning board and all the other boards in Milford have accommodated them into your site, site plans and you've dealt with gridlock in those situations also. That's acceptable. And I don't, I don't, I personally don't see a difference in this consumer trend than those.
I'm going to disagree with you slightly.
You can, certainly.
When we talk about a dedicated queuing lane that has traffic in it, that's not gridlocked to me. That's what, that was, that's what it was designed to do. Again, when we pull into a self-serve gas station and people are no longer in their vehicle and they're elsewhere, that's a definitive problem. That's not the same as a drive-through to me.
Perhaps you've never been stuck in a line in, in those circumstances.
Listen, you go on the bike and get into an accident and be stuck on the bike. I understand what it's like to be stuck in line.
But you're proving the same point, Mr. Kennelly.
But it's different.
Because, and again, not here to argue, I'm just here to bring up, bring up point.
No, no.
The town has dropped, adopted other consumer trends, okay, of drive-throughs and this is simply a consumer trend that for this particular industry suits their needs.
The one other, the one other thing that I would say, we do have a site in Bellingham and Mr. Antonals talked about it earlier. But, you know, so I, I hear you saying I don't see the price, but I watch the price every day. That's my job, right? So, I can tell you, Bellingham's a neighboring town to Milford and I can tell you the average price is ten cents a gallon less. I can show it to you on Gas Buddy, I can show it to you on all the reporting services.
Like I said, I'm a gas, I'm a convenience shopper. I am not, when I need gas, I get gas. I don't, you know, in my car, if I can remember what program the touch, it will tell me which, what's the cheapest around me. I don't know which button to press, so I don't bother trying to find it. Because if I need gas, I need gas. Light comes on, you gotta get gas, it's that simple.
So I'm going to tell you that consumers, consumers buy based on their first choice is convenience, just what you said. Convenience means a different, different things to different people. For you, it's wherever I happen to be when the needle gets to eat, right? For others, and a, and a significant amount of others, convenience means going into my gas station, getting not only my tank filled up, but also buying sundry items, whether it be cigarettes, whether it be sodas.
The ones are in my way, okay.
Whether, well, they are. But, but I'm just telling you, that's, that's what they see convenience as. The other, the second biggest thing behind convenience is price. And one of the things that, you know, the town of Milford, because of that regulation, is the price, the retail price of fuel is, is high. And, and I think, I, I think that's a real, so you, so you started your, what you were saying about, well, someone's got to convince me because I just don't see it. And what I'm telling you is the facts are that the town of Milford's price of gasoline is artificially high because of the fact that the economics are, it's more, or it's more cost-efficient to offer self-serve gasoline for the business owner, whether it be a small business owner, a medium guy like me, or a large one like Mobile or Exxon. So that's, that is, that is the, the truth there. The second thing you brought up was gridlock. And what I would say about our site specifically is, our site because of, frankly, because of the bylaws that require what you're supposed to have for parking and for size of the location, our site can handle the traffic. I think we've got over twenty-five spots, parking spots. We have ten retail fueling spots. A lot of the gas stations that you're probably running into don't have the capability to handle that type of, that type of need. And, and I think what Joe says is, hey, you know what? When they go in for their special permit to go ahead and get a self-serve license, it's got to be able to handle that extra traffic that might be generated through a self-serve application that is either combined with a convenience store, with a fast food restaurant, or whatever that, that new model may be, so.
Do you know how many gas stations are in Bellingham?
Bellingham, I would say there's pretty close to the same as in Milford. Maybe, maybe a couple less.
Again, so if Milford...
And a lot of larger ones.
If Milford...
Probably more.
If Milford...
There's more in Bellingham, okay.
But Milford can still support the fourteen being non, you know, non-self-service. So again, I understand what you're telling me and I, and I don't disagree with anything that you, that you said.
Sure.
But if, if a town can still support fourteen, there's still a need and it's seemingly, that's not affecting the business and it's not affecting people from going there. And again, there could be a legitimacy that the reason why that they're all surviving in Milford is not solely based on price, but it's based on the notion that, that they don't have to get out of their car and pump their own gas. It could be that simple.
Yeah.
Again, so I, you know, there's a lot of different ways of looking at this.
Correct. And there's no one that says you have to have self-service.
Correct.
Only that it's an option. So that's what we're proposing is an option for the zoning bylaw.
I hear what you're asking for. I don't dis, I don't dispute that.
Adam, I'm not sure that there's anything, to be honest, that, that there's anything in here that, that would, you know, that... I really think this is a great article for town meeting. And before there were safety issues and things like that and that was a different story. Right now, I think it's, it comes down to what are the people of the town of Milford want in terms of convenience and usage? And, and I have my own opinions on that, but, but I don't believe that at this point in time, it's a planning board issue anymore. I believe it comes down to the, what the people of the town of Milford want. I, you know, I've looked at Gas Buddy and stuff. It's, it's probably ten, ten cents cheaper in Bellingham. It's probably fifteen cents cheaper in Franklin where there's a group of stations. So there is, there is a cost difference. And hell, I know when I'm down in that area, for some reason, I always stop and get gas down there because I know it's a lot cheaper than it is in Milford. For some people, that doesn't mean anything. And if those are, if that's the predominance of people in the town of Milford, then, then vote against it and all. But I really truly think this is a, this is a great article for town meeting to see what the people of the town of Milford want and have them vote. I, I can't say anything necessarily that says you shouldn't do it in, in a planning sense because of this. And I can't say, hey, you should do it in a planning sense for this. So I think it really goes back to, to me at least, to town meeting and letting them make that decision.
Good move.
With, with that said, any other comments from the board before I open up to the public?
I got a couple. Again, the idea of the, that you'll have some self-serve and some full-serve stations is crazy because you go to the ci, the city of Framingham now, there's not a full-serve station in the whole, the whole town of Framingham.
Right.
And that's much larger area and everything than that. It's, it's there. You come down, I was going to Springfield every day, I came through Upton. Upton's got a full-service station, it's the cheapest gas, cheapest gas you can get anywhere. Cheaper than anybody I see all the time. It's strictly the corporations making money and it's not the handi, it's, this is great with the, you've got to sign with the handicap, but it's not, it's not the handicap, it's the elderly who aren't handicapped, who are, in, in the future, are not going to be going out, don't want to go out and get, get the fuel. I mean, I, I got no problem doing it myself, but it's for the people, the older people, and we're all getting older, because I'm just, I'm the start of the baby boom generation. And I know I'm getting old. And Joe, I think you're very prejudiced with bringing up the pharmacy, the pharmacy. I think, I think that's just a prejudice.
Ah, it's okay.
Oh, I get what he's saying now.
I mean, I guess in terms of, of the older people and stuff, there's, there's, there's five towns in the state of Massachusetts, if that, that don't allow it. I haven't heard an outcry that elderly or handicapped people can't get gas in the state of Massachusetts. So I have, I understand people that haven't done it, having an issue, but I have a tough time believing that, 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 that issue is, is so paramount that Representative Fernandez is here. I, I don't know if the, the former representative, that's correct, ever had, ever had an issue where, where he felt the, the legislature of the state of Massachusetts needed to act because handicapped or elderly couldn't get gas at gas stations in Massachusetts.
The idea of the, Framingham was brought up by my mother-in-law, who was elderly, and she said, she just couldn't, she had to go out and pump it and she didn't want, she wasn't, she wasn't handicapped, she was just old. And she didn't want to do it. And that's why I didn't realize that, they say that's, it's something that's been working. Where, like I say, it works in Jersey. The safety aspect, that's never been a, that's never been a question, the, the master fire laws have taken care of that for years anywhere. The only thing I'd seen is I was in Pennsylvania at a self-serve station and they had multiple quick, extra quick disconnect couplings and the two wrenches at the pumps. So, there must have been a lot of people that drove off with the nozzle in the pumps.
That'll open up to the public. Is there anybody in the public, in the audience who would like to speak on this article? If you could state your name and come up to one of the microphones, please.
I don't walk that well, I'm elderly and I have some physical disabilities, right? I'll move back to this town fifty, oh, my name is Carol Hiller, Sixth Prairie, Sixth Prairie Street. And I didn't come here for this reason, but I do want to comment. I came here fifteen years ago from New Hampshire and I was really disappointed that there wasn't self-service in Milford. I don't buy my gas in Milford. I prefer to use a self-service station and I prefer to look for gas prices. I'm also on a fixed income, which I think a lot of our elderly people are, and it does matter to me. It's just a comment, okay? So I'll continue to go out of town if we don't have self-service in Milford. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I just have a comment, Joe, about town meeting. I was thinking of Mr. Trotta. Mr. Trotta who had the Gulf gas station on, down the plains and he got up every town meeting, Joe. Do you remember it well? And it was, it was a beautiful scene, but times have really changed.
And he ran the only full, self-serve, full-service station that was in town.
And, and...
Because everybody, if you went to Nicky Trotta's, you pumped your own gas.
And every time he came up, you know, it just didn't happen. But I wanted to bring that up because it was something...
It's part of our history.
It's really part of our history.
It's part of our history.
So...
And Joe Acudi too, he got up and spoke.
But anyway, I, I kind of, I agree with Joe that this is a town meeting issue.
And I, I do agree. And I know you've gotten calls and when I went to the commission, they, they've received calls. You know, I spoke at length with Dino about it and it's a sensitive issue with him and he was doing some research on it himself. And again, I, I expect that you'll get a letter, I thought you might have had it already. So, but I, I think they, they, they weren't, they were in favor of us moving forward and coming to this, this forum, so. And we appreciate the opportunity to make the presentation, thank you.
Thank you. It's very informative.
Can you get? Is there a possibility of putting in the bylaw that they have to have a full, full-serve thing and it has to be the same price?
I, I think, I think you're gonna, I think you're guaranteeing yourself that small service stations are going to go under. I, I think that's what you're doing, if you make that requirement.
Or not convert.
Yeah, they're going to have one.
Or not, or not convert, but I mean, that, that may, that may hurt them in their ability of...
Most stations are going to stay full-serve anyway.
They don't have the room to convert, I don't, I...
Yeah, they're, they're going to stay, stay full-serve.
Make a recommendation, no matter what.
Anyway. It's just that, again, it's not the handicapped. I think the laws and the handicapped are taken care of, there's no problem for them. I just think it's the elderly who are not handicapped. But it's hard for a seventy-five, eighty-year-old woman to get out in a ten-degree day and pump gas.
I can tell you right now, my father would shoot me for saying what I said before because he, he would certainly want to have, not have self-service, but I, I think it's...
You can't...
I, I think, I think it's a decision that the, the people of the town of Milford make.
I definitely agree. I mean, again, ninety-five percent of the time, I'm using self-serve. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I'm not, I do it all the time. I can't tell you the last time someone pumped my gas, but I'm, I'm just...
Even if they were supposed to.
No, 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 no. If it says, I'm not that bad, because there's a police, police right outside of, right outside of Revere and they get, they go nuts if you get out of your car, so no, no, no.
Anything else?
Thank you again, we appreciate the opportunity to make the presentation.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Good luck.
You want a recommendation, do you not, Joe?
I want, yeah, I want a motion.
Don't you want a recommendation?
Absolutely, yeah.
Go to town meeting.
You want to close the public hearing?
I, I guess I should ask just to make sure. Is there anyone else in the public, yeah, working the, the motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to be made to close the public hearing, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. All those in favor of closing the public hearing will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous at five. Do I want to make a...
I'll make a motion to send a favorable to the...
Motion's been made to send a favorable.
Again, I, I agree with you that it's up to them. This is not, this is not a planning board issue, it's more of a zoning and it's more the people of Milford need to speak on this issue.
But we're here to make, we're here to make a recommendation.
Well, yeah, we need to make that recommendation, but clearly I think that...
I can't go against something that I use.
In our notes to town meeting, you know, as part of our recommendation is, is that we're making that based on the fact that we believe it's...
I don't have to like it, but I...
The people of the town of Milford should be able to make, should do what they want. The planning board is making it based on that recommendation. So we have a recommendation to send a favorable to town meeting, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor of sending a favorable recommendation to town meeting will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Four in favor, one opposed?
Favorable recommendation.
Okay. Babe, who's the one opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, your water?
Sir, you left your water behind, Peter.
Thank you.
Like to recycle.
Second public hearing was scheduled for seven-ten was the application of Kevin Mean and Rudolph Perotti to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning from single-family residential RB to neighborhood commercial CB the following four parcels of property. The northerly one hundred and twenty-five plus or minus feet of assessors map thirty-three, lot thirty-five. The northerly one hundred and eight feet plus or minus of assessors map thirty-three, lot thirty-five A. The southerly sixty plus or minus feet of assessors map thirty-three, lot thirty-six. And the southerly sixty feet plus or minus of a private way formerly known as Victory Road as shown on assessors map thirty-three. Said parcels being located northerly of East Main Street and easterly of Adams Road and consisting of a total of one point one six plus or minus acres. And the full article is in front of us with the descriptions of, of those parcels. And I believe also the map that John just showed up.
And the meets and bounds.
Yeah, meets and bounds, right.
This is the article twelve in the special town meeting warrant.
Okay. Turn it over to the applicant.
Just for a second, as I may, obviously Joseph Antonals on behalf of the applicant, I want to take this opportunity to introduce my associate to the board tonight. This is my associate Eli Leno. Eli has been with me since last December. He was covering a meeting in Grafton tonight and I asked him if he could stop in. He hasn't had the opportunity to cover for me here in front of the board, but in case he walks in, you let, at least put a, a name and a face and associate him with my office. That would be, I would appreciate that. Well, he's a hard worker and a great kid. His wife and he moved into Hopeville and they're becoming part of both communities. He's been attending the chamber commerce events and I think committed to our community, so.
Welcome. Nice to meet you. Welcome. Nice to meet you.
All right, John, go ahead. Joe, Joe, he's got you beat on the socks. You gotta help him with the thighs, though, huh?
Good evening, John. Now, I'm with the Mean Group. I was in front of the board a couple of weeks ago about Imperial Hyundai down in Milford, and saying we were gonna come to the board to put a garage here, which would be a reconditioned building for the cars, to wash the cars. To do that, we need to change the back of our property from residential to commercial. At one time, the zoning line went 200 feet back, and they rezoned it around the property here. But our site is three separate lots. At that time, we felt they should have went with the property line and down this line, because this was all being used as the car lot, this lot and this lot. For our zoning change now, I approached Mr. Parotti, which is the next-door neighbor. He is, he currently has a commercial building on this lot and uses his entire piece commercially also. In fact, he didn't even know that the commercial line went through his property. He thought his property was already all zone commercial. So he never even realized that he had residential, a residential area on his property. He's been using this the whole time. So what we're asking to do, I met with Larry a couple of times to come up with an area that we thought would be conducive to being rezoned, and we thought it would just be easy to extend the northerly boundary of Adams Road across till we met the back of these residential houses here, and then back down the property line to the current 200-foot zoning line, and bring it back and do a closed parcel there. So that's what we did. We're asking to get changed from the residential zone to the commercial zone. Our property's been used commercial for a long time, and Mr. Parotti's property's been used commercial, I think, for over 100 years.
I remember that.
Questions from the board? Questions from the board? John, you said, are the two lots, the two lots on Adams Street are staying residential, is that correct? You said you were coming straight across on Adams? Am I, are you somewhat incorrect in saying that?
I think you meant the.
Yeah, these are staying, these are staying residential, yes. They're staying residential. We're coming up along. So we had already had Victory Road rescinded, so we're concluding Victory Road. This is our parcel, too. This is all wet. We can't use this commercially. We just thought it would be the easiest way to define it, to extend.
I, I, I thought you were coming across and doing those others, that's why I just wanted to make sure. Again, is this a public hearing? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this zoning change?
I'm really concerned about this reconditioning.
You, you need to come up and use one of the microphones and then name an address, please, also.
Barbara Clive, and I own two Adams Road. What I'm concerned about is when you put this reconditioning in.
It's just a small, it's just a small garage. It's gonna fit right in here.
Okay. Where's the water gonna be dumped out?
It'll go in, we have a huge grease trap there. Any of the, any of the drains will go into the grease trap and then into the sewer system.
Because we had problems last winter where there was a lot of runoff that came down to Adams Road, and we had this big ice block.
We can't hear you.
We can't, we can't tell what you're saying, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to speak into the microphone.
Okay. Last winter, we had a real problem with the car dealership. They had a wa, a lot of water running off, and it went down Adams Road, and we had this enormous ice block in the middle of the road.
For him to do the work that he's contemplating, he has to come back for site plan review. If this change goes past zoning board, those types of issues would need to be addressed and really need to be addressed as part of the site plan process. So certainly, we would, we would look forward to hearing those types of comments as, as we move forward in the process. This really just changes the zoning per se. It doesn't allow him to put any building up or anything like that. It's only, it's only changing the zoning to allow for a building to be there. He then has to come back and say, I want to put the building, here's what I want to do, and here's where we'd go.
Okay, so that would be another meeting for us?
That would be another, that would be the site plan review meeting.
And also, I wanted to know about this right here. You said you're gonna leave that there?
We've already had that rescinded, so that was a road, so we can't put a road there anymore.
Right.
We had that rescinded. We have no intention of bringing an entrance in or anything off the back. In fact, this is already fenced. We're not doing anything outside of the fence of what we're using already.
Okay.
Everything is within that fence, and we have to meet the setbacks off the property lines for a building in Milford. So everything would meet the setback.
Okay.
And again, that would, that would show up in the site plan, but I don't think this board would be in favor of showing, of having any type of commercial entrance off of Adams Road as part of this.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I don't think you'd get there from there, right?
Yeah, you probably can't because of the wetlands, but that's, I mean, just in general, that isn't, you know, that isn't where we would want to have.
I don't think they have any interest in doing that. This is only, this is only so that the full piece of their property is zoned commercial. We're not really referring to any future buildings or things of that nature. It's just, as of today, they're parking cars there seemingly in a residential, whereas they want to do this all commercially. That's really what the issue in, in front of us is.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And the same with their neighbor, who, again, if you did not point that out, I assumed his was all commercial as well. I don't sit there and study the.
I approached him to see if he wanted to come on board and get his, his rezoned, too. He didn't even realize he wasn't all commercial.
Correct.
Any other comments in the audience, just?
Do you remember my name?
I do.
Carol Hiller, 6 Prairie Street. Hi, about Mr. Parotti's land. Right here, I have, I have already some commercial land, a portion of my land is commercial. And I jokingly said, how come you guys didn't call me? And have me included, but I don't want to pay higher taxes right now, so I think I'll wait. Okay, my only concern is.
Excuse me, what's your number? So we have to call you later on?
I've already had someone call.
Thanks. I've always, I've always known that that was residential land, because I, I, but I was, I'm a good neighbor, and I let Rudy saw that wood back there seven days a week. What I'm concerned more about is, and I know this will come later if anybody tries to make changes along here, is there's a drainage ditch there. That can't be covered. I have two sump pumps and a peripheral drain inside my house. But I can't do anything to add more to the water table. So I just want this planning board to have it on record now, in case I miss that next visit when they come back to do something. And hopefully, no more lights will go up around the Hyundai dealership. I can't sleep at night with all those lights on. Thank you.
That's good to know.
They're running 4 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, that's okay. We'll remember that one.
That's right.
That one I won't forget. That much I'll guarantee you.
That is good to know.
And they do have something you called shields. The shields delight so that they don't come towards you. Evidently, someone forgot that one. Right, John?
We'll take care of it.
I thought so.
Anyone, anyone else in the audience that have any questions?
Reminds me of the other place there.
Name an address?
Louis Chesky, 9 Hillside Avenue. I like the idea of that changing to be commercial. But will it continue across Prairie Street?
Not at this time, not, not at this.
Not at this present time.
No, and that would, that would probably, because there are some residential and stuff there, would need to be, people that own that would need to probably, this board has certainly not had.
Any success.
Yeah, of, of trying to do that, so, I mean, it is, right now, this is an applicant petition. And so they've sort of drawn up what they thought was a reasonable thing and something that they could get passed. For it to go further, either this board would have to start looking at it at some point downstream. It wouldn't be part of this town meeting, or the people that are owners in that area would have to take it up themselves, and as this applicant did, bring a citizen petition to, to make a change of that type.
Okay, I just had that question, Adam. I like the idea of him extending that lot back there. Think we'd clean it up. Pretty classy guy. He makes everything look great.
Well, I think, Joe, I think about 10 years ago, give or take, there was the applicant petition, which I believe this board supported. But it, it, there were, it did not, it did not go well at town meeting. But I, I definitely, I do recall supporting that, yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah, so.
Any other comments or questions from people in the audience? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, seconded by Babe. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oops, sorry.
Unanimous at five.
I'll make a motion to pass a favorable to town meeting.
Motion to be made to send a favorable recommendation to the town meeting on the zoning amendment change, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you, John. I don't know if it's still up, I lost my agenda. Santos Garage. Oh, not me.
Amended site plan for 69 West Street, Santos Garage. While the applicant's putting up or handing out the drawings, I'll read Larry's letter. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to operate an auto body shop, auto sales, repair, and towing operation. No building additions are being proposed. The proposed use would include the placement of 15 to 20 unregistered vehicles on the site. The zoning board of appeals granted the required special permit approval for these uses at their 41818 meeting, subject to planning board's site plan approval. The decision is in the packet. For a maximum of 20 unregistered vehicles, the site plan indicates the ability to accommodate 20 vehicles along the westerly side of the entry drive between the street and the existing building. The 12 required off-street parking spaces are located across the access drive directly east of the building on the interior portion of the property. Since the proposed use is for an auto body shop, auto sales, and repair, as well as a towing operation, I recommend that a maximum of 15 unregistered vehicles be displayed for sale, with the remaining five unregistered vehicles be allocated to the body shop, repair, and towing operations. These restrictions are to be in addition to the limitations imposed under the ZBA special permit. Outdoor placement of any such vehicle shall be limited in the existing paved areas of the site. Larry recommends approval subject to those conditions. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Lieutenant Hesam, Gary, and Helen, representing Santos Garage. As stated, we have a commercial piece of property on West Street. Currently, there's an existing steel one-story building. There's existing pavement that, within the site. This used to be an auto body shop. Then it went over to, I believe it was Weather Shield. Now looking to turn it back. The ZBA did vote in favor of a special permit in April, so sell, repair, tow, and for auto body. This is the area that we're looking to store the cars for the sales. This will be the area for the parking, with the one handicap spot closest to the office. We're not increasing any impervious area. We're actually going to decrease it by adding a landscape island up in the front. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
I have one quick one.
Sure.
I have zero problems with the change, because you're right, I think it used to be Bernardi, Baratti, something like that, many, many years ago. Yeah, I, I don't have any objections to you reverting back to it. But you used the word existing pavement. I think you used that a little loosely. I, I, I think the existing pavement needs a lot of help, to be frank with you. Because a lot of it is deteriorated and almost non-existent.
I believe that it's been patched and seal coated.
Yes.
As of?
I patched it.
What's that?
Already patched and painted.
Yeah, he patched it recently, and sealed.
I'll have to drive by again. The last time I drove by, it didn't look patched or sealed. But again, I don't hang out in that neighborhood, so I wouldn't, I, I don't. I mean, you, you know, you drive by, you need, you, you see things. I was at the liquor store, Joe, okay? I was at the liquor store. But anyhow, the last time I, I drove by there, I saw the building was for sale, and again, I do recall that.
Already it's been, I, I patched and painted, I already do it that last weekend.
Yeah, like I said, I, I don't know if that's gonna be sufficient enough, because it did not look like it was in that greater condition. And I don't know if patch and seal is going to ultimately bond it long-term. And usually, I have a tendency to notice that with a lot of these locations, not specific to yours, but just as a general statement, you have a tendency, or they, they have a tendency to stripe the parking, the parking spots to get their approval. Two years later, you can't find a parking spot, because no one bothers to go back and, and restripe them. And again, not specific to your, to you, it's just a general trend. You can go by a lot of places, and, and the parking stripes are no longer there. Like I said, this parking lot, last time I went by, was not what I would consider a great existing. You know, the pavement was not, was not that great. And I just don't know if patching alone is going to suffice.
Any other comments from the board?
No, I, I was just looking over the highway department's comments. It, it says that they would like to remind the applicant that any road opening curb cut permits and trench permits must be obtained by the Milford Highway Department. Have you spoken with them? Did you get?
They won't need any.
They won't need any?
There's an existing driveway there.
They're just looking to reduce that, actually.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that's behind the sidewalk. That's behind the sidewalk. They're not touching the.
They're not gonna touch anything like that, okay.
Yeah, they are reducing it, right? The, they're putting a planter in?
Correct, in this area down.
So you're gonna put, you're gonna cut the curb, the curb, the curb cut out of that planting area?
It's on the property. It's, it's behind the sidewalk.
They're doing the planter behind the sidewalk, so.
Yeah.
You still have a entrance that's there that's not gonna be.
I think what he's saying is the curb cut, the curb cut is the full width of the, of that opening. If you just do the planting on the back end, you're gonna end up touching, you're gonna end up having to touch. Otherwise, you've got a curb cut that takes you into a planter.
Right.
We'll speak with the highway department.
I, I, yeah, I mean, you're just gonna have to follow what they said in terms of curb cut. In order to, in order to do that and make it work out right, is what he's saying. I mean, I don't think that changes.
Yeah, you're just gonna have to close it up.
Yeah.
Put the sidewalk, put the curb, the straight red curbbing in the concrete sidewalk.
Right.
So that's gonna be part of the plan, yeah.
Adjust the milar before I sign it.
Yep.
Make that change on it.
Any other comments?
Nope.
I guess I, certainly what Pat says, I think, is, is an issue, depending on, seeing how we don't know the condition. Especially as, as you get into selling vehicles and stuff and making sure that people with disabilities have the ability to, to walk the site and look at, and look at vehicles and stuff, I think it's critical. So if, if there's bomb craters out there, that's probably not a good thing. I'm not sure how we can handle that, Larry.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be a problem, because if you've got bomb craters out there and you're gonna look at a car, I wouldn't buy a car from somebody.
Well, yeah, I know. Unfortunately.
Had something like that.
Mike inspected.
What, what I would propose to do is certainly we can approve the amended site plan, subject to Mike going out and verifying the condition of the, you know, of, of the, of the pavement. I think that's being fair to both the board and to the applicant. Because again, I don't, I don't, I don't doubt that you did some repairs to it. I just, I don't know if that's sufficient enough based on the last time I drove by it, that's all.
Have you extended the area for the display anyway? What you, uh, didn't they have to, didn't they have to put some more pavement in for the display area?
This area back here? Yes, that's been extended, extended out. That's.
It hasn't been done yet, though.
That's for the parking.
Huh?
That's for the parking.
That's for parking the display area.
Okay, I know, there was, I know there was an area that had to be.
Did it have to be extended? I thought that dimensionally just barely worked.
I think for the 24 feet plus the parking space length, it would have to get extended out.
It looks like, it looks like it might be a small.
I don't know. So it does, I don't believe, I don't believe it needs to be expanded back there. So was that a motion?
I was just having a conversation. I can certainly turn that into a motion. I can certainly turn it into a motion. I don't know if anyone else. I will. I'll make the motion to approve the amended site plan, subject to Larry's, I think, in, in concert with what the zoning board had allowed, the 15 unregistered and the five remaining.
Yep.
For the body shop, subject to Mike Dean's evaluation of the parking lot in its present condition.
And the, and the curb cut, reduction of the curb cut in the front.
Yes.
Motion by me to Pat to approve the amended site plan, subject to the conditions set forth and what's set forth in the town planner's letter, as well as the town engineer walking the site specifically to look at the condition of the existing pavement, and also to address the reduction in the curb cut to allow for the plantings to be put in. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five.
Thank you very much.
Joe, you back up?
ZBA zoning variance, 124 Medway Street, RD Management LLC. While the applicant gets up front, I'll read this one. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for the addition of multiple tenant names to be displayed within the freestanding sign. names to be displayed within the freestanding sign on the Beaver Street frontage of the subject property. ZBA variance granted a variance for the existing sign at their eight thirteen twenty fifteen meeting. The decision is attached, but limited the number of tenant names to be displayed to four. The current petition seeks to increase the number to eight. Since the overall size of the sign will not increase, Larry recommends a favorable be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals.
Simply, the request is to just add additional names to the area that was already approved. This is not a request to expand the area of signage. The present signage conforms to the zoning bylaw. You know that we received a variance for the height of that sign, not for area. And the owner has found that the tenants within the development are seeking to have more exposure and like the sign, and so simply want to go back and be able to add names within those pens. I'll make a favorable.
I will. Hold a second.
I agree. I don't think they should have limited it to four, because that wasn't the purpose of what you were in front of them for. And I think the purpose was actually just to try and control the size of the sign, so...
Yeah.
But again, I don't think what you're asking for is illogical.
You going to be able to read the sign from...
I think... I hope so. I tried this today.
I know this is a destination spot. You might miss that stop and shop in Franklin. You had to have that sign down here.
I know. I can't see it. I recall.
I'm worried about the fact that we're going to put eight on here. You're not going to be able to see it at all. You might be back for another ten feet of height.
Well, you know that there's something there. You know that something's there. Well, if I do, I'm going to guess I won't be favorably received. Mr. Kelly...
At least by one member of this board.
I think I know my limitations in that area.
With that, I believe I heard a recommendation we sent to the zoning board of appeals for favorable recommendations.
I need your letter, please.
Seconded by John.
Oh, no, he doesn't need the letter, sorry.
All those in favor of favorable recommendations to the zoning board of appeals?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five.
You're dying. No, I am. I'm getting exhausted.
ZBA variance referral, Congress Street at Silver Hill Road, Vineyard Point Ventures, Inc. Larry's letter, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow for the construction of a single-family dwelling on the subject property. Petition is incomplete as no survey plan has been submitted to verify the legal boundaries of the parcel in question. The subject property is a remnant parcel remaining after two different legs of Silver Hill Road were constructed connecting to Congress Street. The property was originally part of the old Claflin Farm, and when Silver Hill Road was constructed to curve south to meet Congress Street, the subject property remained part of the front yard for the house that is now numbered as seventy-one Silver Hill Road. It was years later that the straight westerly extension of Silver Hill Road came into use as a street. However, even with those two alignments being created over time on the westerly end of Silver Hill Roads resulting in the current street configuration, I have found no survey plans for the actual property in question, which makes establishing property line locations questionable at best. Therefore, I recommend an unfavorable recommendation be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. The ZBA should consider allowing the applicant to withdraw without prejudice until such time that the above noted legal issues are satisfactory resolved and a survey plan by registered land surveyor can be prepared. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
I was under the impression this plan had been submitted. We have multiple plans. It's been surveyed. I have multiple plans showing different house locations. The request is solely for a sideline setback. This parcel is unique, because it has three street frontages. So each of those frontages requires a frontage setback of thirty feet, as opposed to a side yard setback. The lot has thirteen thousand odd square feet, is a pre-existing non-conforming lot under the statute, because it has a minimum of fifty feet frontage and five thousand square feet, and has not been held in any common ownership with any other property since the roads went in, because those are public ways. So the public ways bisect the ownership from any other adjoining parcels. I think you all know, this was part of the old Capitos Farm. That parcel has sat there. The road, if you're going up Congress Street, heading towards Silver Hill, the parcel, the road on the right, has been somewhat abandoned, not legally abandoned, but there have been fences put up. It's not used any longer.
That's a God rail.
And again, I have plans that we will bring to the planning board.
Well, the plans that were submitted, Joe, with the packet, were all labeled sketch plans. There's no survey.
I have the survey plan. I apologize.
There wasn't...
And I apologize. We have a survey plan. So they've been finalized, and we're showing locations. And again, all we believe, the applicant believes, that he could build a house on the property without a variance. But to do that, he's going to build a larger two and a half story home, and believes that that will be less favorable in the neighborhood than a lower home. A lower home with the wider footprint, longer footprint, will obviously encroach on the side lot setback. We can still maintain fifteen feet, just as though it was a side yard, but we're just, again, seeking to be able to do that, and I'll bring in those plans to the zoning board. They're signed by Gary and Halman now, so...
Yeah, I've looked through all the records.
I apologize. I thought we had supplemented that.
There's nothing recorded.
No, there's nothing of record.
Questions and comments from the board?
Yeah. This is something that shouldn't be built. Shouldn't... There shouldn't be a variance on there.
Right.
This was part of the overall sale, and this was brought out to make a non-conforming lot from the...
But I don't mean to argue, but that's legally incorrect. The parcel is separated by public ways. So it's not... It is separated by the mere fact that the town of Milford built three public ways around it.
Is it?
But the layout plans don't show that. In fact, some of them are in the packet I gave you. This parcel is ignored, because it's not included in any of the plans that were on record at the registry. So my concern is, without it being surveyed and recorded, how do we know what we're measuring from to determine the setbacks to begin with? And then how does the ZBA know what it's waiving? Because I can't find a plan that establishes those property lines. Even the layout plans for the roads are wanting for that, so...
Then that plan will be presented to the zoning board. But again, I just want to point out that it's not part of anything else.
I haven't seen a plan that says that that abandoned roadway was part of Silver Hill Road.
It's not an abandoned road. It's a public way.
It's abandoned.
But the town hasn't abandoned it.
In order for it to be abandoned, the town must petition for the abandonment of a roadway. Until it's abandoned, it still exists. It's town property.
Well, it is town. That's why I haven't seen a plan that says it's town property. I always thought, in the end, this is going back from working there, that it was part of the parcel, and it wasn't a public way.
If it is part of the property... If it's not a public way, then that lot is then bigger, because it owns to the middle of that private way. And we wouldn't need a variance.
But it's removing the frontage from the house, if it's not a public way, which I get nervous about. It's removing the frontage from the house.
It has to be a public way because of the frontage. Because of the frontages.
It has adequate frontage on either Congress Street/Whitewood Road or Silver Hill Road.
That's definitely Congress Street.
Not seventy-one.
The part that's a triangle now, used to be the front yard of the house on the north side of Silver Hill Road. The driveway from that house came right straight south. You can see it on the old aerials. It came right straight south through this triangular piece of property. There was an alternative driveway that went to that house on the north side of Silver Hill Road, over where the current Silver Hill Road connects...
And crossed the public way, Silver Hill Road.
So Silver Hill Road eventually got paved over to the west as a straight extension of the original alignment. But it was only later that it was paved all the way through, and the survey plans to the north of it show the rounding. Survey plans to the south of it still show the rounding. And as you can see on the plans that you're perusing now, they don't reference the parcel that we're talking about. And I've never found a survey plan of record that has defined that of the property. Now, it got physically separated from the original house lot, which was the house on the north side of Silver Hill Road.
By Silver Hill Road.
But that was still their front yard. It was still part of their lot.
But it's not... It's no longer contiguous property. I don't doubt that it was still their front yard.
Correct.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that it was held in common ownership.
But I couldn't find a meets and bounds description of the triangle, or a plan of the triangle. So if that exists, then, you know, obviously, that's what we're looking for.
Well, it's obviously there, because someone's gone out and measured it.
But they didn't submit it.
I understand. It was a sketch plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would help in terms of what Attorney Anthony Ellis is saying, only because I agree with Babe in the first sense. I don't believe this should be a building lot, and we certainly shouldn't be granting any variances to allow it, as far as I'm concerned. That being said, I understand what the applicant is saying, but then again, he could be saying, "I'm going to build a, you know, a twenty by twenty house that's three stories high." Well, if he wants to try to sell that, you know, that may be more power to him. But I mean, I don't know what that looks like, because I really can't tell what the areas are. And again, I couldn't send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board for this parcel to be built.
I can tell you this, we've had a complete thorough title examination done, and this property is owned by the applicants. My client is the petitioner, but the applicants own the property. We had a title examination done before we submitted this. There was prior title examinations done prior to that, and they've all referenced the existence of these three roads.
I believe when the original... When the owners originally subdivided this, the thought was that that wasn't a building lot, and if it were, they could have done a better job in terms of re-establishing what that looked like, and probably come back to this town to ask for discontinuance of one of those two roads to make this, you know, and do this the right way. Unfortunately, the thought process by them was, "How quickly can we sell Form A's and make some money?" And unfortunately, I can't support somebody doing that and then coming back to us and asking for a variance.
I don't, frankly, and I don't mean to be argumentative, but I don't understand that reasoning, because this parcel's been separated by the town of Milford, not by the applicant. Okay, there are three public ways that were traveled. I understand that only two of them are traveled now. I've been driving for over fifty years, and as long as I can remember, Silver Hill Road going, cut Capitos, that driveway that Larry mentioned, was, I don't ever remember it being there. I remember there being a driveway, but I always remember going up Silver Hill Road that way. So again, I'm not... I don't mean to be argumentative, but I don't know how you come to the conclusion that the applicant some long time ago divided that out or did a poor job of it, because that was created by the town of Milford, not by the applicant.
No, I'm not saying it now. I'm saying it when the Form A's along this whole section were done, he owned all of that property, and could have made... And could have asked the town to discontinue this section of Silver Hill Road, so that the frontages came out to what Congress Street is now and Silver Hill is now, and not that section that's there, and we wouldn't have this situation. They did own all that property.
They absolutely did, but I also think we have to remember way, way back, when that was all his property. Remember what Silver Hill was? It was nothing wider than a cow path. Yes, it had asphalt, but it was not what it is today. So I agree, in theory, what you're saying, but I don't think he had malice in his mind when he sold off and subdivided. I don't think he ever envisioned what it was, what it turned out to be. I mean, again, to me, it's a buildable lot. I think it always has been, you know. I think if you're looking at this, and by the way, looking at past trends of the ZBA, I've seen them do worse for... I've seen them do worse for less. Let me just finish my thought. To me, the only sense of encouragement that I would have is that I would almost prefer and mandate that the house be fronted on Silver Hill itself, and that perhaps because it's still a road in the back, that that's where the driveway ought to come out of, just to try to limit the amount... Well, again, I've seen a lot worse from the ZBA. This, I don't find that offensive. And to be honest with you, it's so overgrown over there, as you know, the way people come up at that intersection, I think if you cleared it out, perhaps it would, you know, mitigate some of the accidents that occur at the top of the hill for those who don't understand what a stop sign really represents.
Well, the irony is that this discussion wouldn't have happened if you just went for a building permit for compliant setbacks all the way around, because it wouldn't have come through this...
And that's still an option, but, you know, just because that's an option doesn't mean it's the best way to develop a piece of property.
I am not saying that. I'm just saying it's a...
Again, I don't... Again, we're not here to argue about it, but, you know, I... This is one where I felt as though this is a lot that a variance makes sense, because it's got three frontages. It's unique in that regard. And again, had...
I'm not denying that.
Had someone gone out and cut this up in the middle of a field someplace, that's certainly one argument, but this is three public ways in the town of Milford, all ways we've traveled. But I'll bring you the survey for you tomorrow, so you have it in your file.
That is my concern.
I'll try to help this move along. I'll make a favorable. If someone wants a second, and if not, you know which way it's going.
Motion made to send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Do I hear a second? Hearing none, I'll entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion to give an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board.
Motion been made to send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Do I hear a second for that? Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those who send the unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Four in favor of the unfavorable, one opposed.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Are you sure?
ZBA variance referral for one hundred Deer Street Ultra Signs Corporation. And I'll read Larry's letter on that one. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for the installation of multiple signs on the subject property not in compliance with current zoning requirements. This application is incomplete, as there is no enumeration of the specific waivers being requested and for which specific locations. The subject property is the site of the Restaurant Depot Wholesale Facility, which has approximately five hundred and thirty-six feet of lot furniture on Deer Street. The signage being proposed appears to be for a retail operation in a commercial district, not for a wholesale facility within the BP Business Park Zone. There appears to be no hardship whatsoever related to this property, therefore I recommend an unfavorable to the zoning board of appeals. Is there someone here from the applicant?
No.
No? I'd motion for an unfavorable.
Second.
I guess this is on the building, Larry? Is that what they're trying to signify, or is this just all their signs and then trying to figure out...
This is all of this... This is their sign package that they use for every store. And there is...
These are the days.
They got one, at least one freestanding sign, if not two.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, they need to define which ones they're asking the variance for, otherwise we can't do much with it. Motion been made by Pat to send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals based on the comments in Larry's letter. Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor sending the unfavorable to the zoning board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five. ZBA variance referral, one ninety West Street, Demos and Nicoletta Papparis.[1665.33] Again, I'll read Larry's letter in. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for the addition of an exist, to an existing single-family dwelling on the subject property. Existing dwelling currently complies with all required setbacks.
Thank you, Skip, doing it.
No. You're doing number eight.
Oh, sorry, I did the wrong one. Put them in the wrong order. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for the installation of a small-scale ground-mounted carport canopy solar system on the subject property that would encroach into the required yard setback. Such installations are permitted within the CC zoning district subject to planning board's special permit. Specifically, the proposal is to install carport solar canopies over certain off-street parking spaces located at the Dairy Queen restaurant. Front side and rear yard variances are being requested to varying degrees for each of the three solar arrays. Front yard setback for the easterly canopy is requested to be 11 and a half, where 55 foot setback is required. Side yard setback for the easterly canopy is requested to be 15.9, where 20 feet is required. The rear yard setback for the southerly canopy is requested to be 11, where 30 feet is required. There are no elements existing on the property that constitute hardship, therefore I recommend an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board. But that'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name is John Fernandez, I'm an attorney representing Mr. and Mrs. Papearis, who are the owners of the Dairy Queen property, along with, along with Nikki's mom, they own the property. Nikki and her husband and in-laws own the business, and Nikki and her husband are actually the ones proposing the solar project here. So we have three friendly entities that will be involved in this project. So, and also with me, of course, is Dan Hazen from Gary and Helen, who's done the engineering work, and Todd Sirkka from Green Energy, Green Earth Energy, which is the solar consultant that's working with the Papearis's on the project. For perspective, just to make sure we're all comfortable where we are, if you haven't been to the Dairy Queen, raise your hand, otherwise I think we know where this is located. The Papearis's have owned this property since 19, or owned the business since 1986, and have done several improvements on the property over that period of time. I think we would all agree that they maintain the property, and have developed the property in a, in a really nice and attractive for the business that it is fashion, and they actually are one of the most successful Dairy Queens in the country, thanks to the good people of our region, I guess, and their own initiative.
I think, when they updated their drive-through, that helped immensely, too.
I think that did. You don't think it was the playground area or in the front?
I don't even notice that.
So, what it is, though, is it's a very heavy electric user. They spend, they spend tens of thousands of dollars every year in electrical to operate the facility here. It's a heavy demand on the grid in today's environment, and it's a heavy burden upon the business, given the price of electricity. And as we know, the way the whole renewable energy system works, it's based upon subsidy. Where's that subsidy coming from? It's coming from a higher price on those people who are not, who are not in renewables. And, and it's really causing a lot of problems here. As you know, we came before this board seeking permission to change the bylaw, to allow solar to be used in the CC district, subject to a special permit by this board, knowing that we would have to return. Because of the constraints of this site, in terms of both the manner in which this drops down in the back, where the current improvements are located on the site, as well as its size, and the need for a balance between reducing the electrical load on the grid and being able to support financially the six-figure, over half a million dollar investment that will go into doing this project, there needs to be a certain amount of coverage for this to work. And the goal was to get to 140 kilowatts of power. We're not going to get to that because of the constraints of the site, but we're getting close. If we draw, if we're forced to drop much below what we show here, or really below what we show here, the viability of this from a financial standpoint becomes a real hardship to be able to, to work this site. So what have we asked for here in terms of variances? We've really asked to be able to utilize the existing site in such a way, and the infrastructure that is at this site in such a way that we simply mirror the carports to the existing parking, pretty much. There's a little bit of an extension here, but we're pretty much looking to mirror what's here in order to get there. So in order to comply with the bylaw, the primary and important part of the bylaw, that there be no extension into the drive aisles, and in order to recognize that from the Dairy Queen branding perspective, putting carports at the inner parking lanes would not be appropriate, and probably not acceptable to the Dairy Queen folks, we're limited to come out to the outside. And so what are we asking for, for variance? There's this here, there's this here, and there's this little bit there. And what is the variance? This is only...
48 square feet.
48 square feet here. This, do you know what the square footage of this was?
338 square feet.
338 square.
And 1,502 square feet.
So this, this is the largest incursion in, and, and this is where we're standing about 11 and a half feet away from the layout of the public way. We are as much as 25 feet away from the paved portion of the public way out here. And I would draw to your attention that we are, again, mirroring the existing parking, which is already intruding into the front yard to that level. As we know, there were two prior variances that allowed the building itself to be expanded into the front. The parking is out into this area, and what we're simply trying to do is take advantage of the parking to put the carports in. We did look at the possibility of eliminating some more of this, and perhaps doing some ground-mounted, but the problem is that under the SMART program, ground mounting and carporting are not, and would not be allowed to be done on the same site. So we're limited to doing this here. There was talk about whether we could, instead of having this here, whether we could go back here, but there's a residence here. And we're trying to minimize the impact upon residences. This is opposite a relatively large garage, which you can see is pretty far back. If we were to put solar back here as a, as a carport with parking, we're really having a greater impact back here. Then up here, where this being pushed in to approximately 12 feet from the, from the boundary line here, is actually behind a hedgerow that is up over 15 feet or so high. And it being tucked in actually is going to minimize any ability for the home here to be impacted in any way by sight of this particular one. And in terms of anybody seeing it coming up the street, they're simply not going to. And coming down the street, it's tucked in 25 feet. So, and you've seen the carports, you've seen them down at the Duncan Donus Plaza, these are the same things we're planning on doing here. And so what we're asking for, and we recognize that tonight you're only taking up the issue of a recommendation to zoning board, you know that if we are successful, and I hope we will be there, that we'll be back with the site plan and special permit in a couple of weeks if we are successful. And so it's important, we wanted to bring the whole team, make sure that if you had any questions, we were able to answer them tonight, and if there are any suggestions, the worst thing that could happen is we go to the zoning board with a plan that comes back, and you guys ask for some changes, and now we've got to circle back to the zoning board, particularly with the SMART program essentially released, or shortly to be. So we wanted to put this to you. So I do think, and I respect the town planner's suggestion, that this may be a greater impact than is necessary, as I've tried to explain to you. This site is constrained, we would, we are constrained by the existing infrastructure. The site does have sloping in the back, and so I do think this qualifies for a variance in terms of being able to do carporting over existing, over existing dry lines. I mean, not dry aisles, over existing parking aisles.
Comments from the board?
No.
I guess, yeah, the only one I'm somewhat concerned about is the front one, and more just because of looks in the commercial zone and not having, I mean, it's one thing having parking there, it's another thing having structure there, and I guess I'm somewhat hesitant to that. I don't have issues with the others, it does drop off in that back section, I don't think there's an issue there. And the other one being between the drive aisles, I, I don't, you know, and it's back far enough, even though it's still, you still need a variance for it, I don't, considering it goes after the split as you enter there, I don't have an issue with it. It's only that front one on the down, on the, on the far side, being that close, I would sort of like to see that one being a little bit, a little bit further back off the roadway. And again, it's more for part of the zoning in terms of building locations and stuff like that, was, was looks and how things felt, and this becomes a, a structure in that area, and I sort of, at 11 feet, think that that's closer than I'm, than I'm sort of comfortable with. But other than that, I don't have any other issues.
If we could go someplace else with it, I recognize that, we would try to, but I think if we move it, we're going to have a greater impact upon, and remember, in terms of a structure, this isn't going to have a back, you're going to be, to the extent you're looking at it, it's a post, and it's a tilted roof, and you're going to be looking right through it to the hedge behind it. The greenery, I think, is going to continue to dominate that site at that location, and again, we are 25 feet from the right way, the paved way, and hopefully people aren't taking their eyes off of the road at this time anyway.
The last sheet has the...
If I may, Joe. John, my recommendation would be that, that you have the pillars be green, so that it more mirrors what the greenery behind it is. I think therefore it's, you're going to have a greater tendency to, to obviously blend in. You know, if you painted, if it came white, blue, black, I think it's going to look like a sore thumb. I would prefer, specific to that, and again, I'm not asking you to pick 10 different colors, so I would stick with green, and I think over there, you're going to blend it in, I don't think you're going to notice, because those hedges are very, very high, and I don't think the average, I don't think, I don't want these to stick out. And they are quite green, and they stay quite green throughout the year. So I think if you, if you stuck with that kind of hunter green, I think you'd blend right in. I have zero objections to what you're doing. You know, I, again, I'm familiar with the whole SRAK program, I'm familiar with, you know, what they're giving you and what, you know, and every year it changes. So you have to bite into it now, because six months from now, it will change, and God knows what you're going to end up with. So, you know, it is somewhat of a time-sensitive issue, but again, these are controls that are well beyond your means.
No, the program is moving, we've got to get into the queue on it, and, and it is, I mean, it's a, it's a significant investment, amortized over, you know, 10, 20-plus years, even over 30 years in terms of the return on that investment. But it does give them an opportunity to sort of get off the grid with part of their power, control that themselves as they, as they go forward here, and...
I will.
You know, it is, it's a benefit to, I think, everyone involved.
I'll make a motion for favorable, unless anyone else has questions.
I'll second that.
Motion to send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, seconded by John. Any further discussion?
The only thing I was, I was happy that we had the hedges on the trees in front to block it, but Pat's idea of coloring those, I thought is, thinks is a great idea as far as camouflaging as far as...
It's like the cell towers, they look like a tree.
No, they look awful.
But don't use that as an example. No, but the principle, this way you can actually do it right.
No, I, I agree.
That would be my only...
No, we were just talking about how that could be done.
That would be my only caveat to pass on, I'm making the motion substitute...
I appreciate that.
You know, other than that, there's no other way you're going to do it. That's the least intrusive, and I think, again, if you pick, you're going to pay a color, whether it be black, brown.
They'll be back in...
Yeah, they'll be back.
For a special...
Well, they have to go to the ZBA, but yeah.
Thursday night, we'll be at the ZBA. Thank you.
Well, I don't think they took it to a vote.
I was thanking for the motion.
And questions by the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. And I did spend many sleepless nights thinking, how can I camouflage?
I'm sure you did. I am sure you did.
I never thought of painting them.
I have a lot of exposure with, with solar panels, so sometimes you have to get creative.
You know.
That was for the advertising.
That's easy, it's the most cost-effective way, I think, of camouflaging it, to be honest with you. And you're paying for a color, so pick a color that suits you.
That's right.
Good night, John.
Good night, John, thank you, John.
Last one on the, on the agenda, is the one that I already started reading. So we're halfway through it, whether we know it or not.
Lena wasn't paying attention.
Grandpa.
24 Silver Hill Road, Jennifer Fernandez, CBA, CBA variance.
I was going to ask that question.
The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for addition to the existing single-family dwelling on the subject property. The existing dwelling currently complies with all required setbacks. Specifically, the proposal is to add a second story with attic above the existing house, and to construct a two-car attached garage with attic. The proposed addition is to be 28 feet from the front property line, 30 feet is required in the RB zone. The existing detached garage is 5 foot 1 from the front property line, will create a site obstruction to the west for vehicles entering the existing driveway to the proposed detached garage. The existing garage should be removed or relocated. There are no elements existing on the property that constitute a hardship, therefore I recommend sending an unfavorable to the zoning board.
Motion for an unfavorable.
Second.
Just to bring everybody in, the applicant is asking for a variance based on, you're adding a few feet in the, in the front...
And making the house non-conforming.
Front east section of the house making it non-conforming. The addition of the, the garage is within their rights and don't need to even come to us. So I'm not sure why they need that.
Two feet, I don't understand what two feet represents.
And make the lot non-conforming. And also, as Larry indicates, the existing garage, if they're going to put new garage, really needs to be removed, because it's 5 feet from the property line.
Right.